Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for this September 6, 2022, and hoping everybody had a great Labor Day holiday weekend. Item number one, if we could call the roll.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting is absent. Councilmember Contreras here. Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you very much. Now, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
From staff, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as stated. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to item number four, we would like to give a warm welcome to our two-term Second District U.S. Congressional Representative Angie Craig, and welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor Mars. I am so honored to be here this evening to give each of you a bit of an update on what I've been working on in Washington on behalf of the City of Shakopee. I said thank you to your law enforcement here outside, and he made sure I wasn't going to give him any trouble this evening, so I promise I won't. I just wanted to start out by saying thank you to every single one of you for your leadership over the last three and a half years that I've been a member of Congress, but of course, through this especially tough time that we've all lived through, where, you know, our businesses were literally shut down. I was really proud to be part of an effort in the previous administration to pass the Paycheck Protection Program to keep those small businesses going, and I know that's been a really important part of keeping Shakopee running so strong over the last little bit, as well as some of the ARPA dollars that we sent. Thank you for so diligently spending those dollars. So I thought maybe I'd just give you a little bit of an update on what we've been working on. Last year, I worked with Mayor Mars and many of you to secure the $3.5 million in federal funding to stabilize and strengthen the eroding Shakopee Riverfront. I always say these are Scott County, Dakota County, Rice County taxpayer dollars, that it is my job to then follow that money to Washington and get our fair share back from an investment perspective. Of course, this year, I worked with the mayor and other local leaders to identify any additional projects that would strengthen Shakopee's economy and improve infrastructure and public safety. A few months ago, I was really pleased to learn that the House Appropriations Committee approved my request for over $4.8 million in federal funding for some of these critical projects, so let me just detail some of those to you. The funding included $1.5 million to construct the Regional Innovation Hub, $2.5 million to complete a water reclamation system at the new organics recycling facility, $750,000 to continue working on the Riverfront Cultural Corridor project, and $84,000 for Scott County's Sheriff's Department to acquire additional disaster relief and rescue equipment and technology. With the committee's approval of this project, I expect the full appropriations process to conclude here a little bit later this year, but given that so many of our projects survived the last appropriations process, I am cautiously optimistic. In addition, I just want you all to know, I am dogging those federal dollars that went to St. Paul that now have to be distributed out to the state of Minnesota and our communities, and so I just had a call with the Commissioner here this past week, and I will continue to advocate for funding and using that infrastructure money that was approved on a bipartisan basis to bring that back to Scott County and to the City of Shakopee. So just a few other things I wanted to make sure that I update you on as I'm here today. I know that, you know, like all of you, we're doing our best to represent our constituents in any way that we can to reduce costs. Certainly, inflation has been a challenge, and that's something that I've been intensely focused on as a member of Congress over the last couple of months. One of the bills, though, that I wanted to just mention here today is the Inflation Reduction Act. Part of that bill will lower healthcare costs for working families, and I think that's really important, the things that we, as legislators, have some input on or control over, we should be moving rapidly. So your seniors in this community are really going to benefit from the cap on prescription drug costs at $2,000 a month. One of the bills that I've been focused on is capping insulin copays at $35 a month, and we did get that through for Medicare folks here in the latest appropriate, latest bill process. A few other items I just wanted to mention in addition, in particular, this community just continues to grow and develop, and you're doing really a marvelous job of advocating for yourselves. I'll tell you that the mayor, there's not a week that goes by that he's not asking me for an update on something and advocating for the City of Shakopee, so I know, Mayor, you will continue to do that. I sit, though, on the House Committee on Small Business in the U.S. Congress, and one of the things that I've introduced over the last little bit, given that input costs for businesses have gone up, is legislation that would lower the federal tax rate for small businesses from 21% to 18%. I've also introduced another piece of legislation that would lower costs for pass-through businesses. So I know, you know, all of us are focused on how can we make sure that our local businesses are surviving and thriving. And then the last piece of legislation I'll just talk about before I say thank you once again is the You Earned It, You Keep It Act, which I introduced recently, which would allow folks who live on Social Security to stop paying federal taxes on that Social Security, and so that has been a piece of legislation that my office gets a lot of input on, and I just want you to know on behalf of seniors that we're working toward that. And then finally, just because I started with law enforcement, I want to end with law enforcement as well. You know, the number-one job of any elected official is to make sure that our communities are safe. I have been a strong supporter of a few pieces of legislation, really proud of the fact that the Public Safety Officer Benefit Act got across the finish line and has now been signed into law. That allows our officers, you know, and families who experience the most devastating of consequences to apply for the benefits that they've earned should a member of our police department have a mental health crisis or, God forbid, complete suicide, which is exactly what happened in one of my communities in Minnesota, so we were able to change that under the law. Two other pieces of legislation, one, the Invest to Protect Act, a new small grant program for departments to have some additional resources outside of city or county resources. That is something working its way through Congress that I'm pretty proud that we are close to getting across the finish line. And then the last piece is the Pathways to Policing Act. Pathways to policing, obviously, we've had some challenges with recruitment and retention of law enforcement in many of the communities that I represent, and Congressman Dean Phillips and I have partnered to put together a grant program that will enable communities to really recruit from, you know, the people inside your communities, and hopefully, over time, our law enforcement will better reflect the communities that they serve. So with that, Mayor, I just want to tell you how proud I am to be able to fight for Shakopee. As I said before, you're a strong advocate for federal funding, and I'm a pretty good chaser when it comes to finding our tax dollars in Washington and doing everything I can to get them back home, invested in our local community, and I'm certainly going to continue that as a member of Congress. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I know I was supposed to be here in, at that July meeting, but really, really happy to be here, and just thank you to every single one of you for representing our community so well. I wish I could represent the community on a nonpartisan basis, but sadly, you can't. But I'm just going to keep working across the aisle best I can for those of you I've never met before. The former president signed four bills of mine into law, and I keep giving the current president a hard time because he's signed fewer of my bills into law, and so I'm just going to keep working across the aisle where I can find those partners, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come and give you an update tonight.
Representative Craig, thank you very much. Your support for our district in Shakopee is second to none. We're very appreciative of the work and leadership that you provided. Any quick questions here? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Representative Craig, obviously, we've worked together on many projects on 169. Anything 169 affects Shakopee with all the transportation issues and the agricultural traffic. The last one, I believe, was 41169 interchange. Appreciate your support on that project. Question I have is the 169282 at grade crossing. There's a funding gap in that project, and we just had another pretty serious accident. It's at grade, and I know you're well aware of the plan on making that whole corridor not at-grade crossings, so any movement on funding for 169282? And I know, you know, there's a smaller project wrapped into that in a township out there, nine, and some other ones, so any comments on that?
Yeah, Councilman, you know, that was one of my highest priorities. Every year, I'm asked to give somewhere between 10 and 15 priorities. My process is, I ask you all, what are the priorities in our communities, and then I go fight for what you tell me. I think that project specifically did not get funded directly, but that was on my list of projects that I've submitted to the state of Minnesota, to the Department of Transportation, because all the money that they have to invest in infrastructure, that came from that federal bill, and so as far as I'm concerned, 169282 will remain a really key priority, and I know it's a huge public safety issue, and I didn't know there was another accident there. So thank you for making sure I know that, and I'll get my team to look up the details.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
And just a closing comment, Mayor. I've got to plug the 169 river crossing. It's, as we grow, it's always going to be an issue. I know the pillars were built for adding a lane to that, and I know there's been some studies on doing just that, so as we move forward down the road, no pun intended, obviously, but the, that the capacity crossing that river is a bottleneck, and at some point, it's going to have to be addressed, so.
Well, I.
Stop and by.
You're so welcome, and Chairman Kevin Burkhart stays on me regularly about everything 169, so I'm sure we'll continue to see that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, and I want to apologize to the board here and to you for being late a little bit today, but thank you for all you've done for Shakopee. I can't recall ever the attention we've gotten from our congressperson and representative, so thank you for that. Thank you for the money you got for us for our riverbank stabilization and future projects like the Cultural Corridor is great. And I guess I'd be amiss if I didn't plug my MVTA transit funding. You know, the transit, MVTA is an opt-out, and their transit gets funneled through the Met Council, and since some of these opt-outs are 20% of all the transit in the metro and the Twin Cities area, we don't get 20% of the funding through the Met Councils. So any way we can smooth out some of those relationships and funding options for transit, I'd appreciate that.
Well, I've, in my first four years in Congress, become very aware of the politics of transportation in Minnesota, and I've done my best to really advocate for the communities, and of course, MVTA has been a key part of what the priority projects that have made it onto my list are. And as some of you know, the process, we call this community-based projects, and the process that I run is just simply my communities, my elected officials get to propose these projects, and then we go through a really tough analysis of which ones are shovel-ready and how we prioritize our submissions for our tax dollars back to the district. So I'm really happy, though, to actually start seeing money come back to Minnesota too, because I think, you know, that's my job, is to make sure that our projects that you tell me are your priority get funded.
And thank you. Counselor Contreras?
Mayor, thank you, Representative Angie Craig, for everything, and taking the moment too. I got to plug in my liaison. You have worked really hard with our schools. You were there, I remember, we were both there. You supported the gloomies, right? It's our students with disabilities and our technology department, so for that, thank you, and everything you've done, because you didn't say anything of that, but I know of it, so thank you so much, just amazing.
Well, pray for me. I'm going to be on a bus later this week with a bunch of school kids, so just pray for me.
Thank you.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you very much for coming tonight and giving us an update. I think the innovation, the support that you're showing for the Innovation Hub is really going to benefit this community. We really need a high education in Scott County, and it's also supporting the entrepreneurial community, so thank you very much.
Jody, thank you. Before I dip my toe into politics, I spent 12 years at what was once a startup company in a garage called St. Jude Medical, and we grew it to pretty big over the years, but I've never forgotten that's where my career came from, so thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Craig, you know, I value building relationships and direct relationships, and the contact that I've had with you is almost weekly, even at my cabin on a Sunday morning. I am forever thankful and thankful for the community grant last year, and I'll be, will be monitoring the community grant process again this fall. Thank you again for all that you've done for District Two and Shakopee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll just end by saying I'm looking forward to being back for some craft beer next weekend, so thank you for having great events in our community. All right.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Moving ahead then to number five, item number five, our consent agenda. Mr. Reynolds, are there any changes, corrections?
No, sir.
All right. Counselor Whiting? 5B6?
D.
D6, okay. Thank you, and others? Others? Counselor Brennan?
I'll just make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
I have a motion and a second to approve the modified consent agenda, which would not include 5D6, and if there's no further discussion, before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for 6 September of 2022. 5A1 approves the city council meeting minutes for 16 August of 2022. 5A2 approves the small brewer off-sale license for Mano Brewing. 5A3 approves the on-sale and Sunday liquor licenses for Shakopee Butcher LLC, doing business as Dangerfields Restaurant. 5A4 approves the use of space between Arnie's and Shakopee Brew Hall Parklets for the Shakopee Brew Hall's Bach Fest fifth anniversary event on 17 September. 5B1 adopts Resolution R. 2022-TAC 119, accepting a donation from the Shakopee Youth Baseball Association consisting of a new batting cage and new dugout roofs at top of West Field. 5B2 approves a joint use agreement between the city and the Shakopee School District. 5B3 approves a Shakopee Youth Hockey Association Agreement Amendment. 5B4 approves an Advantage Sports Group Agreement Amendment. 5B5 approves a Shakopee Skate School Agreement Amendment. 5B6 approves a temporary on-sale liquor license going to the Shakopee JCI for Boo Bash being held at Yuber Park on 29 October of 2022. 5C1 adopts Resolution R. 2022-TAC 118, applying to the Minnesota Department, excuse me, Minnesota Deed for a redevelopment grant. 5D1 approves a contract with Asphalt Service Technologies Corporation, the amount of $145,000 for roadway crack sealing in 2022. 5D2 approves a right-of-way encroachment agreement for 976 Stonebook Drive. 5D3 updates the city's vehicle acquisition, use, and replacement policy. 5D4 adopts Resolution R. 2022-TAC 116, accepting bids and awarding a contract in the amount of $307,605.17 to PKV Excavating for the Lyons Park Pickleball Court Project. 5D5 approves the purchase of two Ford F-150s from Midway Ford for $76,491.52, one Ford cargo van from Ford Hibbing for $58,696.2, two Max Snowplow trucks from Nuss Truck and Equipment with accessories by Towmaster Truck Equipment for $599,535.24, and declares equipment surplus. And 5D7 approves a professional services agreement with Blondo Consulting LLC for archaeological services for the CSAH 101 and Shenandoah Drive Traffic Signal and Improvements
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. I have a motion for the modified consent agenda and a second. The consented, modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to item number six. Now, I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and make a comment on an item not on the agenda tonight. Please step forward, welcome, state your name and address to the record, and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And you can pull the microphone closer as needed.
My name is Donna Senkata, and I'm here to talk about the park that is wanting to be developed in our neighborhood on Kalani Hills from Summerland Place. Thank you. Mayor and council, I'm here to speak for all of the residents living in Kalani Hills, which is a 1970s development of Shakopee. It includes 15 homes, which is zoned rural residential on Tyrone Drive and Sharon Parkway. I have a signed petition here from everybody in the neighborhood of the residents saying that we do not want our park in the center of our neighborhood to be developed for the Summerland Place development. The development is going to have 589 residential units. 12 of our homes surround our park and would be personally affected by this change. The question is, why is our community being used for this subdivision? If Summerland Place wants a park for their huge community, it should be placed properly in their community to accommodate the number of their residents. We have XL Energy power wires going over a good portion of our park, which gives off shocks to you if you're under it or walk around it. Now, that's not very safe for the kids. We will never have enough parking space for the amount of vehicles it will attract or the higher density foot traffic throughout our entire neighborhood. There are no sidewalks for safety of the kids or toilet facilities, and we've already had a carjacking, house break-in, theft, and a predator pedophile in our neighborhood, and this, developing this park in our neighborhood would just increase that crime in this small area. We also have a hard-of-hearing special needs child, which raises a lot of red flags for potential accidents. Being as we are a rural area, we have many animal species that live in our habitats, such as chickens, possums, raccoons, wild turkeys, deer, fox, and many wild birds. If our park was developed into a very active park, we would lose all of them, and it would take away the quaint, the quietness of our neighborhood. The noise, the cars, the lights, and the people. Our neighborhood is a quiet, secluded area with limited parking, no toilets or sidewalks, electrical power lines. How can our small park or our area possibly accommodate everybody from a 589-unit subdivision? We don't have sufficient roads to accommodate all the traffic coming and going. Come down to it, if Summerplace has already donated money to develop our park, I know that that money can be transferred to develop a different park in their area that will accommodate their people. In closing, we are asking you to leave our undeveloped park alone and allow us to continue living peacefully in our quaint, quiet community and not disrupt it with this big subdivision. And Hugh, I have.
I have suggestions at all. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your comments, your concerns. We're probably unable to discuss these issues in full because it's not on the agenda tonight. Did you speak at the public meetings in regard to the development process for Summerland?
Pardon, I'm sorry.
Did you speak, did you speak during the public process for the development, Summerland process?
No.
Okay, but.
One of the neighbors, Sue and Dennis Mark, did you?
If you're going, if you, can you please? If you're going to speak, I would ask that you'd come forward, introduce yourself, and then I just want to make sure that.
My name is Joe Senkata, and I was not at that meeting, but one of the members of the neighborhood were.
Okay.
Were following up on it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Other questions? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I have a question for staff, if they could just get this information back to us at some point. In '74, was it, when your area was developed?
It's seven, yeah, I think so.
Okay. Can staff find out for us if the development of that area in 1974, if that parkland dedication was under the state statute, Minnesota State Statute Park Dedication process?
We certainly can find that out. I believe it was.
Most likely, but it'd be nice.
Find out for sure.
Can't quite go back that far.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. This is part of the, item number six, recognize any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda? Not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. And please speak into the microphone.
My name is Tom Larkin. I'm from 8427 Portage Lane East, Shakopee. My wife, Diane, we're very happy to be here tonight and excited to meet you all. We've been in the, we've resident there for 12 years, and we live near a green belt, and in the green belt, there is a water containment pond, and this is what it looked like when we moved there. And up until 2021, this is.
Was that right on the, where the white is, and they would zoom in on that?
This is what we, this is what we've been seeing outside of our deck. This is what we, this is what we've been seeing outside of our deck.
I wasn't clear. Thank you.
And now, it is, uh, this summer changed to a completely algae-covered pond that, um, has not changed all summer.
Put that right on top. Well, right on top where the...
We had made the complaint through the, uh, website of the Shakopee website. And we were, um, given a, um, uh, email back from the Water Works. And they, um, simply passed it off as being a, uh, lack of rainfall. This is, the water will become stagnant and overgrown with algae. Well, after doing some, um, uh, investigating and research on this, algae like that needs fuel. It's, uh, it's really a situation where it's a, uh, overabundant nutrient level. That's fueling this. And, uh, so we looked around to the other, uh, containment ponds in our neighborhood up as far as a mile and a half on back. And none of them have algae. Ours is the only one that's completely covered, and it's been covered all summer. So, this goes back to two thousand twenty, when the beavers were there, and they made a home and, in that pond. They cut every tree down in November and drug them into that pond. November of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
The city was told about the beavers in the beginning of November. The middle of November, they cut some trees of ours down, four trees, two, uh, twenty-foot, um, river birch. When we called in, um, the, um, Department of Water and Environment, the person admitted that he had gotten the, um, he was advised that the beavers were there, and he was sorry he didn't do anything about it. And he felt terrible that this happened. And, um, the, the next day, the crew was out there picking them up and, um, working on, on, uh, collecting the, uh, the brush and the trees out of the pond with a canoe. Well, it, uh, we have pictures of all that. And, and, um, they spent one day. Although I don't know how long the beavers were doing it, but they spent one day doing it. And, um, and then they never returned. In the spring, uh, you could see the, the brush rising above the surface. I was out there with a grappling hook and a rope, fishing this stuff to the shore and throwing it over the berm. And I did that all the way around until we got to the point where the large trees couldn't be budged. So, other than myself and the, uh, three crew that did it in November, it may be half-done. So, this, this, uh, decaying organic material from, from the, the trees is cooking up this algae, that's what we believe. We don't think it's a matter of water rain level. We think it's this, um, overabundant nutrient level. So, we would like, because it is so thick and it's so nasty-looking, and we, and it seems to change colors between, uh, green and blue-green, we'd like to see that, um, tested to see if, if there's any toxins in it. The, um, you know, the, the family members in, in the Glacier Estates are, are very concerned about it as a health hazard. You know, they're telling their kids, stay away, um, keeping their dogs away, keeping their, their, uh, they're on watch. We would like to see the, uh, the pond cleaned out. We really think that if it's not cleaned out, it'll stay like this forever. It really resembles, uh, a wa, a first stage of a water treatment plant. And, um, besides the, the site of it, we think that it's a health hazard for the community, and we'd like to get, we'd like to have this resolved.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Uh, Mr. Lilahog, is this, uh, pond on part of the Prior Lake Outlet Channel System? Or a settling pond of such?
Uh, Mayor and Council Members, I'm not exactly sure which pond this is.
Okay.
And I, you know, I, we have, we have hundreds of ponds in the community.
Thought you may be aware. I didn't, I'm gonna get you off card.
I do not, so I'm not, not really prepared to talk about this specific pond, pond tonight.
Just a question, thank you.
So, do you have some documentation you could leave with the city clerk?
Yeah.
And then, um, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I didn't catch where this pond is located.
Glacier Estates.
Up by Glacier Estates?
Any chance of...
Okay, it's, it's, uh, located, uh, right behind eighty-four, twenty-seven Portage Lane East.
Eighty-four, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven. And it's, that's Glacier Estates in South Bridge Neighborhood.
Right.
The corner of, uh, County Road eighteen and County Road sixteen.
I know where it is.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure if it's part of that system.
And we'll have, uh, I guess, uh, hopefully, we can direct staff to look into this and see if it's a stormwater pond under our control, and then see, uh, what, if anything, can be done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your concerns to us.
You're welcome.
This is a part of the, uh, agenda item, when the public can come forward and talk on an item not on the agenda? Anybody else like to come forward? Seeing none, then, we would move to item number seven, business removed from consent. And we have six, or five D six, no parking zone along one-on-one Frontage Road. And Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it seems like just a couple of weeks ago, I was patting ourselves on the back for being so forth thoughtful about our trucking industry, an industry that keeps us supplied and has been under a lot of stress lately. And I know, I realize, I went by the site today, and there was twenty, at midday, twenty trucks there. Uh, not completely full, but, uh, pretty full, and I know it's grown quite a bit. And I talked about in the future for industrial sites that things like this have to be thought of at a city level, I think. You know, whether it's, uh, you know, in this case, you know, a porta potty in a trash can or something. I understand that, uh, uh, the landing has concerns, 'cause people are parking out there, and, uh, um, I get it. But, uh, I just wanted to bring that up, that truckers need a place to park. And that we don't wanna see them in the residential areas. And I don't wanna see one in, industry or one company taking over a site like that either. But, uh, we gotta think about where trucks can park.
Okay. Other comments, questions on this? I guess, uh, I count these trucks, uh, every Sunday afternoon, evening, when I come home, if I'm at the cabin, for the last two-plus months. And there's never been less than twenty. Sometimes that number is thirty-four, thirty-five. I like it because it's off the road. I know we've had issues on Fourth Avenue, both east and west, out in the industrial zone. We had, you know, they were deteriorating the road, parking there off of Certainty. And then we had traffic to the east along, uh, over by the Toro area. You know, but now, if it's a public safety issue, uh, I do see, you know, typical semi, if they're there with their cab and their trailer, and it's just, to me, overnight parking, waiting to get a shipment in the morning. But a lot of times, I see empty trailers with no cab, or a bunch of cabs with no trailers, and/or, uh, residential cars. And I'm kinda going, well, are they moving through? Is it just a one night, or, um, Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, we, we get our information in our packet, and we ask questions of staff if we have issues of concern. And this is one item I did bring up to staff, and I, I, you all saw my, the response from staff in the communications, public information. But my concern was, if we put no parking on this road, when we have the harvest, and all, uh, trucks come up with the grain, and they're parked there, waiting to dump at the grain silos out there, they're not gonna be allowed to park there. And the response was that a truck that is currently active, involved in a process at the grain elevator, waiting in line, and in the vehicle, are gonna be allowed to, to be staged there to complete their task. I think that, that real issue is cars are being parked there unaccompanied, nobody in it.
Right.
You know, trailers.
Right.
Not connected to nothing.
Right, picked up their trailer.
Or trucks parking in such a manner that the general public can't use a public street. They're parking side-by-side, and you can't even get through the place. So now, you know, in theory, the, the public's paying for a public street and the maintenance of that street, and they, they can't physically use it. So, I, I think what we're trying to do here is, we're trying to set a happy medium to where, you know, we recognize you can park single filing to get into the grain elevator, but you're not gonna be able to block the road, you're not gonna leave a vehicle there unattended. Uh, you're certainly not gonna use it as a personal parking lot. So, but I don't disagree with you, Counselor Whiting. I mean, we got a lot of commercial industrial uses, and there's gonna have to be some thought going into that. I agree with you.
Counselor Contras?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to me too, I mean, th- that was my, my question. I was like, where would they park? And I think as we, as staff came up with this, did they have a plan B? I mean, is, is there, uh, where are they going? Because I'm guessing not only are they doing it for the grain, um, silos, but also if, you know, the truckers gotta pick up, like you said, on Monday, Monday morning from, um, the roofing, the, the shingle makers, um. I don't, you know, is it better to park on that end, where we know that's a main street? I mean, waiting on, what street is that? I'm trying to think.
Are you talking about Fourth?
On Fourth? I mean, is it better, or for them to stay out of main traffic and park there? So, i- i- it is a lot of things that I too was wondering, do we have a plan B?
Counselor Brennan?
I've, I've noticed the backup in the trucks, um, recently also. And it seems like a number of them have identifying marks on them, um, of the business that they're connected to. So, I, I think there should be responsibility, um, by the business to make sure that they have enough parking for their trucks to, to move their product and have a place for them to park that's not on a public street. And I thi- I think probably, I don't know, gee, majority of them had that identifying mark on them. So, so I can understand that, um, the concern. I don't know if there's been changes on, um, that area that made it more difficult for the trucks to, to park, or to park alongside the road. I don't think so. I don't think those trucks are really waiting there necessarily to go to a certain business. They just seem to be waiting. I mean, they just seem to be parked, so...
And I, and my thought is, is with the, in, there's quite a bit of independent truck drivers out there. They're not all, they might be hauling for one company, but they're driving for themselves, or they're contractors. So, um, and they need to park their vehicle somewhere. And on city streets, it's, it's not recommended, not allowed. So, I think, well, in the future, when we're building industrial, commercial areas, we need to expand the roads with extra parking on the sides, because that's what they need. Or we require more truck parking, uh, in commercial and industrial facilities. I don't know what else to do.
Well, I, I agree, but I, I can't identify who these trucks belong to, if they're folks that are waiting to do business in Shakopee, or they're waiting overnight to go to Egan or parts, you know. Number one, we had a parking issue on Fourth Avenue that was deteriorating the road. The impact, I think, back then was Certainty. But Certainty opened a huge side lot to allow their trucks to be staged in their parking lot. Uh, Amazon's a big facility, they should allow and have and should take those, their own trucks or their independent contractors, and house them onsite as well. I know we've had some truck parking even up by, uh, Target, uh, store off of, uh, uh, that side street there. You know, I, I don't know if I have a solution. I, I agree, this grain elevator is a, you know, sixty percent of all the produce in the southwest metro area comes through one sixty-nine in Shakopee.
Southwest Minnesota.
Right, southwest Minnesota. And either comes to that grain elevator or the Port of Savage.
Is that about six weeks window?
Yeah, short, but it's a lot.
It is a lot.
I think we should allow parking for those. But that would be like just twenty-four hours, right? If you come late in the day and they're closed, or too late, and then you get to stay overnight, and then you're in the queue for the morning, or...
Well, I think they adjust their shifts for that.
Right.
Harvest too. Mayor, if I could, you know, I'm thinking about the independents, you know, hypothetical, you're coming out of, down south or something, and you're gonna haul for a widget company X, and you're gonna pick up Monday morning, and you're making good time, and you get into town on Friday night, and you're gonna sit around until you can pick up Monday morning. I get the, the truck side of it, where they're making good time, and they can make extra money by picking up their load early, getting to their drop-off early, and pick up another load, and, and, you know, pay their inflationary cost. I get that. But really, what, all it really takes is a little communication between the, the trucking industry and the pickup and drop-off sites. You know, hey, look, if I'm gonna get into town early, do you have a place on your location that I could park and do my required sleep time and vehicle checkover before Monday morning's pickup? I mean, it sounds like a pretty simple fix if they would do that. I don't know why that's not being done.
Who do you think's gonna do that, though?
Well, you would think the trucking company, or whoever's picking up or drop, or even drop off. You know, if you're gonna drop off, and you gotta drop off by five o'clock on, or Tuesday, and you get there at six o'clock, do they have a place for me to park until I can meet the next available drop-off time? So, you know, I think it's a, probably a good conversation for the whole industry to have, uh, across the country, because it would alleviate a lot of, lot of issues, and it would probably help the supply chain, and it would help everybody involved. So, I, it seems to me it'd be a really good conversation, and it costs nothing to do.
Well...
Mayor, um...
Steve, thank you.
I don't have a smoking gun to give here. But I'm just scrolling through some pictures here that the PD took out there. And there is, um, excessive amount of trash, um, mattresses, a cart. There is oil all over this road out there from these trucks. There's disconnected trailers parked the wrong side of the road, going the wrong way. They're double parked on each side, causing a safety issue. Uh, the PD, you, you know, it's difficult to track whose they are. It's a hodgepodge out there, but the PD did look at a few of them. And, and some of them are, you know, are out-of-towners, um, is how I described it there. It doesn't appear that there's even really a connection to Shakopee meaning, and that, uh, someone from outside of the community knows I can park there. So, they come here and park, and then they leave their truck, and then they drive their car away. Then they come and leave their car there and drive the truck. So, it's, uh, it's, it's everyone out there. And it, it's not just Certainty, or Amazon, or there's a lot of trucking companies out there. So, um, it's difficult for us to proactively go figure out who they are and address it. We are addressing it, as you indicated, Mayor, uh, historically with Certainty, with Amazon, and a lot of the different businesses, some on, uh, a couple of the valley roads over there, about trying to better accommodate their truckers and staging and all of that. But none of these trucks are, are for the immediate businesses on that road, which there's the landing, and there's the grain depot. So, none of those trucks are even, you know, apply to the businesses on that road. So, um, that was our recommendation, and certainly, we can continue to work with PD and be flexible in the future for those key periods of time for the grain reeder.
Counselor Whiting?
No, I, I wanted to have a discussion about it. I understand, it seems like there's always somebody that's gonna wreck it for everybody else. And, uh, I think as a community, we gotta plan for things like, uh, trucks. But I understand the situation, I understand the landing's concern with it, and, and other businesses, and, and of course, the, the condition of the road. So, I, I guess I'd make a motion to approve a no parking zone, an installation of no parking signs on both sides of County Road one-on-one North, Frontage Road, west of Casai eighty-three.
I have a motion, and Counselor Lehman?
Second.
I have a second. I appreciate the discussion, but I also, I look at it, and it's been a growing problem all summer. And, uh, you kinda wonder... it's been a growing problem all summer and, uh, you kind of wonder about, you know, all the things associated that we talk about, the garbage, the disconnect, the the road going downhill. That's really what happened to our road on Fourth Avenue. So, uh, I'm in favor of this motion.
Mayor.
Counselor.
I I I th- I think the road can handle the traffic. It's it's been handling truck traffic since I was a teenager.
Right.
But it's just ridiculous to think that, you know, common sense can't prevail where you don't just drop off your trailer and side by side and block a whole damn road so nobody else can use it. I mean, this is not acceptable.
Right.
Um, throwing your garbage everywhere and stuff, no.
That's all right.
Right.
There's got to be some ground rules here so everybody knows what the rules are and, uh.
Motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Now let's move ahead to item number eight. I will stand, uh, for, entertain a motion to recess for our EDA meeting.
Counselor.
Motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go to recess for our EDA meeting. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I call to order the September sixth Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting. Um, if staff could please note the role. Um, item number two on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There's been a motion by Lehman. And a second by Whiting to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, um, five to zero. Item number three on the agenda is the consent business and that is the EDA bid, uh, EDA minutes, um, from August third. Mr. Mars.
Madam, uh, President, I'll offer the consent agenda.
There's been a motion.
Second.
And a second by Contreras to approve the consent business. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, five to zero. Item number four on the, um, agenda is the general business and four A is the preliminary two twenty twenty-three EDA levy and budget. And we have Mr. Reinhardt presenting.
Uh, good evening, President, Commissioner, Commissioners. Uh, tonight we're asking for the EDA consideration of the preliminary twenty twenty-three EDA tax levy. Uh, similar to the city levy, this is the, um, what is set, uh, for as the maximum levy for the EDA for twenty twenty-three. Um, between now and the final adoption, adoption in December, it can only be re- reduced, it cannot be increased. Uh, we're asking for approval, uh, at both the EDA level and the city council level tonight, so you'll see a similar resolution, uh, as city council. Uh, the EDA levy is subject to a limit of, uh, point zero one eight-five percent of the city's, uh, estimated market value. Uh, the EDA levy cap for twenty twenty-three is a million one hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, so the levy being proposed tonight, uh, as well within the cap. Uh, the EDA levy, uh, differs slightly from the general fund levy, um, in that it gets applied to all taxable properties within the city limits, including, uh, tax increment and tax abatement, uh, properties. Uh, the EDA levy is also identified on the property tax statements as a separate, uh, local tax outside the city's general property tax. Uh, the EDA levy is specifically designated for economic development activities, uh, and any funds unspent from year will remain, uh, within the EDA fund for this purpose. Uh, the EDA has acquired the master lease for River City Center, um, so the EDA is responsible for the business tenants on the main level, uh, and the CDA contenders manage the senior apartments on the second level. Uh, the activity, which would include lease revenue and expenditures, uh, will be accounted for as a separate fund within the EDA, uh, but it has not been incorporated within this twenty twenty-three preliminary budget. Um, staff is, uh, not recommending any change in the EDA levy, uh, which is currently at five hundred thousand. Uh, additional funding is provided through a contribution of half a percent of revenues from the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. Uh, the twenty twenty-three budget anticipates that contribution amount to be two hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred. Uh, the expenditure side, uh, is made up of, um, primarily personnel and professional services, uh, which would include a hundred percent of the Economic Development Coordinator, uh, and fifty percent of the Planning and Development Director, uh, ninety-one thousand for continued, uh, entrepreneurship programming, uh, twenty-five K for Main Street, seventy K for the facade loan program, uh, and seventy-five, uh, K for other professional consultants that may be used during the year. Uh, for the median value home, whose value increased by sixty-one thousand eight hundred, annual property taxes, um, amount to twenty-three dollars in twenty twenty-three, which would be a dollar more, uh, on the median value home in in twenty twenty-two. Uh, absent of any change in the median value home value, um, from last year, uh, it would be, uh, property taxes would come out to about eighteen bucks or a four dollar decrease. Um, so it's the value that's driving the the property tax increase there. Uh, I can answer any questions that you may have. Um, otherwise I ask, uh, for consideration of the resolutions adopting the twenty twenty-three EDA levy.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Reinhardt and Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, is this ha- does it, does this work just like the city's, uh, levy where this is a preliminary that comes back later for final approval?
Uh, that is correct. So we'll bring this back, um, with December and it'll have to be, or in December and it'll have to be approved by the EDA and then as well as the city council. So this recommendation will be forwarded on to the city council, which is you guys.
Sir, Mr. Mars.
Uh, Madam President, so this is the same amount of dollar value of levy as last year. Is that correct?
Correct, no change.
Yep.
Yep.
Ms. Contras?
Uh, thank you. I'd like to make a motion if, um.
I have a question.
Mr. Whiting?
Um, you know, we've, we're throwing money still at the professional services that, which we always do with lawyers and things in our economic funds. Another ninety-one thousand for the entrepreneurship program. Um, you know, I've talked about this before as being one of those buckets that's never going to get it full. Um, I want to see what , uh, we're going to be spending on for the entrepreneurship program for ninety-one K. So if we can break that out for future discussion, um, and also maybe break down those professional services from last year so we can see what we spent on breaking out those professional services. I just, just, I want to see some results on that entrepreneurship program, so.
Is that?
I'd I'd like to direct staff to to break that out for me.
Okay.
For the, for the group here.
Can you please take note of that?
Yeah, I I can, and to add just some more clarification. So it's the Contender with the Momentum Strategies contract that we've had in place this year is what the.
Yeah, and the goals and objectives.
Okay. Ms. Contras?
Thank you. Now I'll make the motion to adopt resolution R twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight approving the proposed, um, special benefit levy of the EDA, um, of five hundred thousand collectible in twenty twenty-three.
Been a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Mars?
I'll second that.
There's a second. Um, is there any further discussion? I want to think the, um, point out the SPU contribution, um, and that's fully supported by the SPU Commission. Um, and we're very, I can say we because I'm on the SPU Commission, but we're very supportive of it. So it's our opportunity to help with economic development. Thank you. Okay. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, five to zero. Um, next on the agenda is the professional agreements for the RCC Design and Construction Manager as Agent. Mr. Kurski?
Good evening, Madam President and Board Members. So before you tonight is a, uh, professional service agreement with RSP Architects and its subcontractors and Kraus Anderson for Design and Construction Improvements for River City Center. We've, uh, looked at the, um, concept plans in the past. I think you all picked option B, so we would like to move forward and begin the actual design and construction documents to get that project put out to bid so we can, uh, hopefully have it under construction in the spring.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Kurski?
Madam, uh, President, uh, is this included in the, uh, twenty twenty-three EDA budget?
Madam President and Board Members, it's in the capital improvement program. So, um, as, uh, was mentioned, we're pulling River City Center as a separate budget item. So you'll see that revenue and expenses separately since it's a long-term investment which the EDA owns.
And follow-up question, Madam President. So if we were to go ahead with this, then the end result is we're going to get a document that starts talking about how much this whole thing's going to cost as, uh, the upgrades?
Uh, Madam President and Board Members, yes. Our, as you remember, the process as a construction manager's agent, all of those contracts will come back as a package to use. You can actually see what every single item will cost, um, as they move forward. So they'll do a preliminary estimate, a secondary estimate, and then actually go out to bid and get hard numbers, which all will come back to the EDA board. If you remember, this is not only the building, but it's also the sidewalk, streetlights, trees, and then also, um, new lighting in the parking lot because that was one of the number one issues that came out from the tenants.
Mr. Whiting, did you have a question? Oh, Mr. Lehman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just so I understand what I'm reading here, we're going to spend two hundred and thirty-one thousand and another three hundred thousand for half a million dollars to figure out how mu- how many millions this is going to cost us.
Madam President and Board Members, so the three hundred thousand is if you all move forward. I believe the, um, construction cost estimating is a very small piece. As construction managers, agent, they don't get their fee until they actually build the project. So they'll probably have twenty to thirty thousand dollars in expenses over the next six or seven months while they do construction cost estimating, working with contractors. But then you have a full set of construction documents with a estimated value from the construction manager. If you decide to go ahead, that's when they'll get paid for construction management services.
So why are we approving three hundred thousand for a construction manager now if we don't know what the amount is?
Madam President and Board Members, so that is a contract, we're not going to spend all that money now. All we're going to be doing, it's a commitment to them that if we move forward, they're going to keep that time available for us.
All right.
So we're not paying them the three hundred thousand dollars.
All right, let me try a different way. What percentage does a construction manager make on total project?
On the total project costs or?
Yep, construction, total construction cost.
So a construction manager as agent, they don't get paid a percentage. It's hourly. So they've estimated construction would be four months on this project. So they're working as the city's agent. There is no general contractor. So about ten percent of that three hundred thousand will be the estimating that they'll bring back to you with full construction documents.
So they're going to get three hundred thousand dollars for four months worth of work? Is that what you just said?
Yes, that's correct.
Wow. Okay.
And that means they have a full-time construction manager and they carry all the insurance in the project. It's no different than a general contractor, except the difference is every single item is publicly bid out and they bring it back to you for approval and they're there all the time as the city's representative.
Mr. Mars, did you have a question?
I'm President. As, Kraus Anderson is the construction manager as the agent for the city. You're saying they were going to spend three hundred thousand, but I thought I heard you say at one time, and then I heard you say it a different way, that Counselor Lehman was asked, if they do their work about how much we're, could spend on the upgrades and we, the council for some reason said no, Kraus Anderson would not get three hundred thousand.
Madam President and Board Members, that's correct. They get about ten percent, which would be thirty thousand dollars. It's only, they get four months' worth of time is included in that three hundred thousand to build the entire project out and have their staff and their supervisors there.
Now ask it another way.
Yeah.
So let's say that we got the plan to spend a million five for all these deferred maintenance upgrade on the River City Center. And then we said yes down the line in four or five months. Kraus Anderson's a construction manager. Their contracting total would not exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Madam President and Board Members, that's correct. It's a not to exceed amount.
All right. I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay. Would the board like to proceed with this? Is there, Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I'll offer a motion approving execution of a professional service contract with RSP Architects for an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and with Kraus Anderson for an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand for construction manager as agent.
Second. There's been a motion and a second by Contreras. Is there any more discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes four to one. Um, item number five on the agenda is the EDA bill list. Is there any questions regarding the EDA bill list? Mr. Mars?
Madam Chair, just the, the Gong Company reimbursement, that's a pass-through for, was that part of the dirty dirt, uh, aspect on the?
Madam President and Board Members, so if you remember, we got a grant from the Met Council and one from DED. That's a hundred percent pass-through to them. So they completed the work. We got the money from DED and the Met Council and we're now passing it on to the developer.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, number six on the agenda, uh, the agenda is the adjournment to Tuesday, October fourth. Can I get a motion? There's been a motion by Contreras and a second by Lehman. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes, five to zero. We are adjourned.
We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for September sixth, two thousand twenty-two. We just completed our EDA portion of the meeting and we're moving ahead then to, uh, ten A one, which is, uh, the proposed, uh, property tax levy, uh, general fund budget and debt levy for twenty twenty-three. And Nate, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Uh, tonight we're asking for city council adoption of the twenty twenty-three preliminary levy and budget. Uh, if approved, this would set the maximum levy. Uh, the city would not be allowed to let, or would be allowed to levy for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three. So from this point forward, um, the levy can only be decreased, it cannot be increased. I've left all the slides in the presentation from the August sixteenth work session. I won't cover them in as much detail as that work session, but wanted them to be available. Uh, this PowerPoint presentation along with the memo that I provided to, uh, council is available on our website. Uh, so for members of the public who might be more interested, uh, in learning more about the twenty twenty-three budget, I'd encourage them to, uh, review those. Uh, we have a few changes from the work session at our, um, from the work session at the last council meeting. Uh, we have updated assessment data, uh, with the most, um, recent information from Scott County, which includes the fiscal disparities distribution amount, uh, which was not available until last week. Uh, we had only the contribution numbers and not the distribution numbers. Uh, we are seeing an increase in the distribution, um, which ultimately lowers the the tax rate and the tax calculations. Uh, for the median value home, uh, effectively this amounts to fourteen dollars less for twenty twenty-three than what we, uh, had presented in the work session. Uh, we did also receive our health insurance premiums, uh, and in total it amounts to approximately a, a zero increase. Uh, but there are some variations among the plans. Um, some of them went up two and a half percent and then some had, uh, some were flat and some had small decreases depending on which, uh, plan option was chosen. Uh, so we did leave twenty-four thousand to account for that as well as, uh, an expected increase in our dental insurance, uh, which provides about a hundred and twenty thousand in savings. Uh, ultimately, uh, great news that we had expected about an eight to ten percent, uh, increase. Uh, we did have our, uh, representative complete an RFP this year, um, so I think that helped drive down some of these costs. Uh, that, um, the hundred and twenty thousand, uh, we've used to increase the allocation, um, to implement the full-time comp and class study. Uh, there are some positions, uh, that were missed from the initial study, which, uh, now have been programmed into. Um, we expect to bring this, um, bring the study results back for council consideration, um, prior to the adoption of the final levy. Uh, but based on the preliminary findings for non-union employees, we're at about ninety-five percent of the average market rate rate. So, um, that's what that amounts to, um, based on the preliminary results of that study.
Mayor.
Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, is is this a, a placeholder amount, meaning it covers what we're anticipating to come out of this study? And if the study recommendations could be less than this amount?
Um, i- it basically covers the preliminary report plus these revisions that were made since the last preliminary report. Uh, but it would cover what, um, their recommended course of implementation would be for the full year. So it would not be more, and thus we've decided to implement it in a different manner.
Could it be less?
It, that is the amount that is currently in there, but it depends how you, if you choose to make a, you know, if you approach a di- a different implementation strategy, let's say you do half a year or you phase it in over a period of time or do it a different way and then what's proposed in the report.
Well, it almost, it, it sounds like you're telling me that you have the results of the study and you know this is what it's going to cost. Do we already have the results of the study?
We do have the results of the study, but the problem is, is that as we look at the implementation, we're trying to figure out how best to make that work. So, uh, I hope to have it, uh, the study fully in front of you, uh, in the next couple of meetings. Um, because the reality is, is that, yeah. the reality is, is that, yes, essentially, you can call this a placeholder, but we believe that that's what this is going to be. But much like Nate had said, if you want to start the process mid-year as opposed to one January, well, then obviously, it's gonna have an effect on the overall numbers.
Okay.
Right. That's a, actually, sometimes in the past seven years, we've done something like this, I think, two times. And we did it, I think, to right-size it. I think we did it over two years.
Yeah, and, and, and this particular study is to get the salaries on the mid-range level of all of our comparable cities. In other words, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're in the middle. And that's, that's what this council has traditionally been looking for.
More?
Well, I was trying to just understand if this is the amount for implementing it? It could go down based on how we implement it? Could go up on how we implement it?
I, I don't believe it will go up.
No, we, we would, that would be the cap that we would have planned on using based on our conversations. And I, I mean, we hope to be a little further along, but I think there were some follow-up questions and items that we had as staff that we asked them to take a look at, that we weren't necessarily comfortable with. So slightly delayed from where we had hoped to be.
And in our initial look at it, we realized there were fifteen positions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Positions that weren't addressed as part of the original study. So that pushed our timeline back as well.
More to come.
More to come.
Yeah, and that, that would explain the difference between the two hundred thousand and the three hundred and twenty thousand we're now asking for.
Nate, continue.
Okay. So those are the, those are the changes since the work session. So last time, we talked about the financial objectives. We do believe that this budget does meet all these objectives that are presented on the screen here. Shakopee continues to remain strong financially. A big part of our strength was the implementation of our internal service funds for equipment, buildings, park and technology. That allows us to effectively fund the replacement of these items through level annual amounts. And then despite being in good financial position, a number of drivers we talked about that isn't necessarily unique to the City of Shakopee that have an impact on our current and future budgets. A big factor of that being in the past year, being inflation. CPI from June of last year to June of this year was nine point one percent, impacting several of our, several areas of our operating costs. Personnel accounts for seventy percent of our city operational costs. Local governments are experiencing staffing challenges in many areas, including police officers, firefighters and part-time positions, which is impacting market wage rates. And we're also seeing impacts to workers' compensation as well. As population grows and development occurs, we continue to see an increase in demand for our services. And then we are seeing property tax shifts in Shakopee, as well as statewide, as a result of a significant increase in residential market value in comparison to other property types. The city, city has seen significant growth in market value over the past year for taxes payable to two thousand twenty-three. That market value is seven point two billion, which is an increase of one point two billion, or nineteen point four percent from last year. New construction accounts for a hundred and twenty-seven million, or ten point eight percent of that increase. On the flip side, we did see much smaller increases in commercial and industrial properties in comparison to residential and apartment market values. I've updated this slide through two thousand twenty-three. The gross tax capacity is adjusted for fiscal disparities, which is unique to the Seven Coney metro area. We are one of the larger net contributors to the program. The two thousand twenty-two data showed that we're ranked tenth out of a hundred and seventy-nine communities. This chart shows the fiscal disparities net contribution in terms of tax capacity. We've gone from one point four million in two thousand twelve to six point two million in two thousand twenty-three. And I put that in context of what percentage of total tax capacity that is. It's about seven percent of additional tax capacity that we're contributing to the program. This slide illustrates kind of the tax shift that we talked about at the last meeting, but residential represents fifty-one point two percent of the city's tax capacity. In comparison to last year, it's about four point three percent more. So this chart is in percentages, but if you think of this in dollar terms, it works out, you know, roughly the same way. So for every dollar the city requests on our levy for two thousand twenty-two, residential properties paid forty-seven cents of every dollar. Where in two thousand twenty-three, it's about fifty-one cents of every dollar. And then, again, prior to getting into the budget numbers, I just wanted to provide what that looked like without adjusting the levy. So without any change in the levy, we would be at twenty-seven dollars for the median value home, or a three point one percent increase. Where you'd see a four point eight percent decrease for apartments, fifteen percent for commercial, and eleven percent for industrial.
And it's important, important to understand that the city has no control over this. This is not a conscious act of the city. In other words, the city is not saying, we're going to tax industrial base more than residential. This simply is.
We don't set these values.
No.
So staff is recommending a preliminary levy of twenty-three million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand. This is an increase of one point four million, or six point two five percent over last year. And then the preliminary EDA levy of five hundred thousand, which is flat from the previous year. We are proposing a continued of the seven hundred thousand capital improvement levy. The abatement levy will increase for the first abatement payment for Churney Industries. And the debt service levy will increase for the two thousand twenty-two A improvement bond. This is the required debts, the required debt service for that is three hundred and forty-eight thousand. However, staff is proposing to utilize two hundred thousand of local projects funds in order to phase that over a two-year period. And then, to put things into context, one percent levy increase-decrease amounts to about two hundred and twenty-five thousand of funding per year. So here's the summary of the two thousand twenty-three preliminary general fund budget. Public safety continues to be the function with the largest level of spending for the, for the city. Overall, the city is anticipating a net increase in non-property tax revenue sources of a million fifty-nine thousand, which includes increases in the SPUC payment in lieu of taxes contribution, building permit revenues, rental housing revenues, municipal state aid, investment income, and police contracted services. On the expenditure side, we're forecasting an increase of two point three million. Like most other cities' operational costs, or primary, our expenditures are primarily driven by personnel. Of the two point three million dollar increase, one point six is related to personnel. So this would include a two and a half percent cost of living adjustment, market adjustments for the part-time and full-time. So the part-time was implemented this year, and the first budget impact will be two thousand twenty-three. Scheduled step increases, and then estimated workers' comp rate increases. And then, as far as staffing goes, we're proposing some full-time staff positions, full-time parks maintenance operator to keep up with the growing level of parks and streetscaping and open space. Full-time rental housing inspector that would implement the rental housing license program. And then three fire department supervisor positions that would be implemented mid-year. We've also increased the annual rent charges. This is just a calculation based on added equipment and parks. And then the other services charges would be the additional, the addition of the rental, rental housing license module and Tyler software, elections, additional election, purchase of elections pulpad and tabulator upgrades, motor fuel increase in motor fuel costs, the county prosecution costs, which is an increase in allocation from the county, credit card fees, which is based on a percentage of revenues, street steel coat, natural gas costs. And then on the bottom there, the two hundred and thirty-six thousand is kind of net miscellaneous adjustments across departments. About a hundred and forty thousand are specifically identified, and we have a hundred, about a hundred thousand available as we dig deeper into departmental budgets. Here's the two bonds that we levy for, one being the bond we issued this year and the other being the two thousand sixteen abatement levy. We're asking, as part of one of the resolutions, for debt cancellation of the two thousand sixteen abatement levy of forty-eight thousand, which is fund balances available within that debt service fund. And then also asking for a two hundred thousand dollar transfer from the local projects fund to cancel a portion of that debt. EDA budget, we've talked about that a little bit earlier today. Here's the tax capacity and tax rate comparison over the past ten years, based on the preliminary assessment value data, which still will have some changes before the final, final, final market value is released by the county. But the proposed tax levy will decrease the city's tax rate from thirty-two point one one percent to twenty-eight point four two percent. So a decrease of three point six nine percent. So even with a proposed increase in the levy, we're seeing a pretty significant drop in our tax rate. The value of the median home increased from two hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred to three hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred over the past year. For that median value home, that increased by sixty-one thousand eight hundred. This equates to ninety-one dollars, or a ten point four percent increase annually in proper taxes. Absent any change in value from last year of the median value home, you could expect a tax decrease of eighty-nine dollars or ten point two percent as a result of the declining tax rate. And then for reference, when we talk about a one percent levy increase-decrease, it amounts to approximately ten dollars on the median value home. So same chart I had shown earlier, only it reflects the six point two five percent levy. As you can see, you'd still anticipate seeing a decrease in commercial and industrial property, and then the ninety-one dollars for the median value home. So these are hypothetical properties, just based on the median value for each property type. Then shown this chart before too, but this is the two thousand twenty-two annual cost of services. So our property taxes on the two, on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, as well as sewer and storm usage. And you can see that we rank near the bottom of our comparable and surrounding cities. Just a reminder that when you receive the property tax notice from the county this year, there'll be an additional one-page summary of, I guess, of changes of each function of government. So you'll have one from the city, the school district, and the city, and it'll, or the county, excuse me. And it'll just show our budget change from last year for each one of our functions. And then, just wanted to also mention, there's a few refund programs out there for property taxes. The difference between the two is the special refund does not have the income limitation. I'm not an expert in either one of these areas, but you may want to direct, if, I guess if residents qualify, qualify for that, they may want to look at the Minnesota Department of Revenue page to see if they do. And then the budget calendar, the only change I have on here, that's September twentieth meeting, this is adopt the CIP. That'll be October sixth. And then the final levy, which will be the truth in taxation hearing, will come back to council on December sixth, and we'll ask for adoption at the following meeting. I did add one slide just to kind of address some of the positives of the budget, I guess. So we are seeing twenty percent growth in city taxable market value, so significant growth, with a hundred and twenty-seven million, or ten percent of that growth being from new construction. Significant home value appreciation for single-family homes, so twenty-three percent on average. Significant, about eleven percent decrease in the city tax rate from thirty-two point one one to twenty-eight point four two. Anticipated property tax decreases for commercial and industrial properties. Investment in public safety, which will include the full-time fire supervisor positions and the rental housing program implementation. And then continued investment in parks and trails. So even though this isn't part of operations, we have six point eight million currently identified for park development and replacement within the CIP for next year. And then the addition of the full-time park maintenance operator position. So with that, there's three actions that I will ask for your consideration. First one being Resolution one thirteen, which cancels, basically adjusts the debt service levy on the two thousand sixteen A abatement bonds, and the geo-improvement bonds, and authorize a transfer of two hundred thousand from the local projects fund. One fourteen, which sets the preliminary city levy, the maximum city levy of twenty-three million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand. And then sets the truth in taxation meeting for December sixth. And then Resolution one fifteen, which approves the preliminary EDA levy that the EDA approved earlier today.
All right.
Bet I can stand for any questions.
Nate, thank you very much. Questions of staff? Questions of staff? So I just want to, you had mentioned in one of your slide that one percent of the levy is two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then in another slide, you talked about the, in the beginning, the fiscal disparities, and you had mentioned that that had gone up by two hundred and thirty-five thousand. So that, that we're not getting in fiscal disparity, so that, it was a value adjustment? And so it, it said that right here on this slide that, I don't think it was this slide, but I just kind of, your adjustment on the money that we're not gonna get was one percent of the levy, right?
Yep, it roughly equals one percent. So that was the very first slide. So, so we had that, we actually had the, the contribution number before, so we knew how much we were contributing, and we just didn't know how much money we were getting back. So that was higher than it was last year. We're still providing more than we did last year, but because we didn't have that number, we just used last year's for the first work session.
And then our tax rate, was that twenty-eight point forty-two? That's the lowest it's been in ten years?
For sure, yeah. I, I would have to check to see how, if we were ever lower than that.
Other questions? Other questions of staff for the preliminary maximum levy? Councilman Lehman, or Councilman Whiting, excuse me?
I started off with offering a motion, our two thousand twenty-two dash one one three cancelling, cancels, adjusts the debt service levy of the two thousand sixteen A abatement bonds and geo-improvement bonds, and authorizes a transfer of two hundred thousand from the local projects funds to the debt service per fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the first set of resolution. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Councilor Contreras?
I'll take number two, adopt resolution, our two thousand twenty-two dash one one four, setting proposed maximum two thousand twenty-two property tax levy collectible in two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Senator Brennan, seconds. This is for our maximum levy question. Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, this is the maximum, and it's coming back for final adoption, which can't be increased, but it can be lowered, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
And just to mention that I, in, I think this, the maximum levies all have to be set by cities, by state law, by the end of September. And in talking with my peer group around Scott County, I believe our levy stands up against any other levy in Scott County and any other city, except for maybe one. Some other folks are looking at eight, nine, ten?
Thirteen.
Huh?
The thirteen.
Okay. Ouch. So I just want, we have one of the lowest tax, preliminary tax levies in the county. Motion on the table in a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Senator Brennan?
Mayor, I'll adopt, make a motion to adopt resolution number, our two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash one one five, approving the levy of a special benefit levy pursuant to the Minnesota statutes, section four six nine point zero three three, subdivision six by the Economic Development Authority for the City of Shakopee, Minnesota.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Contreras. Further discussion on the same resolution we passed on the EDA. Coming to the council, further discussion? Discussion, discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Does the EDA levy, is this a maximum? Does it also come back for final adoption? Or is this the final adoption?
That is correct. We plan on bringing it back. You do have the option, though, to adopt it as the final levy, but we plan on adopting it as the preliminary levy and bringing it back in December.
Answer your question?
Yep.
Motion on the table in a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Moving ahead then, ten B one, appeal of the Board of Adjustment and Appeal Decision on a CUP revocation for property on County Road one oh one. Michael, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is the appeal of the, excuse me, Board of Adjustment and Appeals decision for- Mayor and council, so this is the appeal of the, excuse me, Board of Adjustment and Appeals Decision for a conditional use permit at seventy-three hundred County Highway one oh one. This is the site in question. Get this to work. Outline here in red. So a conditional use permit for vehicle service and repair at seventy-three hundred County Highway one oh one was approved on April eighth, twenty twenty-one. Staffers received numerous complaints about non-compliant conditions. Multiple letters were sent to the property owner requiring compliance with the CUP. Those requests were not met, therefore the BOAA revoked the CUP at their April seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting based on staff's findings. The CUP included seventeen conditions of approval, conditions not compliant at the time of the BOAA's decision were. Access for emergency vehicles must be maintained on the site. The access must be provided by the Shakopee, must be approved by the Shakopee Fire Inspector. The applicant shall maintain all vehicle parts being stored in the interior of the building in a neat and orderly manner. Service and repair of vehicles must be conducted entirely within a structure. Vehicles that are unlicensed or inoperable must be stored completely out of public right-of-way from view from the public right-of-way and must not be stored on the site for more than seven days. Storage of parts, tires or other items shall be limited inside the building. All drive aisles should be kept clear and meet code requirements, which is twenty-four foot wide for two-way traffic. And all trash containers shall be stored on the interior of the building or shall meet city code standards. So this was the original site plan that was approved by the Board of Adjustments for the Conditional Use Permit and the proposed building that would have four tenants. This is what was found when the Board of Adjustment and Appeals revoked it. So you can see here, unregistered inoper- inoper- inoperable vehicles and vehicle parts being stored. Trash not properly enclosed, exterior parts sitting outside. Fire access was blocked. Again, exterior parts being stored outside, you can see there's an engine sitting out here on the ground. Trash not properly enclosed, you can see the dumpster just sitting out here. And vehicles stored in unimproved area and the drive aisles were inaccessible. So these trucks, as you can see here, are literally parked truck to truck, so you can't even get one of these trucks out of here. So they also damaged landscaping and there were numerous unregistered vehicles on the property. So based on that, the Board of Adjustments recommended revocation. And so we have been working since then with the property owner and their attorneys on getting the site cleaned up. There was a letter on the table tonight from their attorney. They have evicted, I believe, all of the problem tenants on the property. So this was the property on Friday, so the north fence and landscaping are now in place. You can see the site's been cleaned up. There were, you couldn't see it that well in some of those pictures, but there was oil staining going on and pooling of water with oil in it, which they've cleaned up off the site. Here's the current west parking lot along the north side of the building. You can see again, it's been cleaned up pretty much. And then the current south parking lot showing the unencumbered fire lane and access to the building. So since the board's vote on April seventh and subsequent appeal, the property owner and his attorney have evicted several tenants and have thoroughly cleaned up the site. Based on a recent staff inspection, the site appears to be in compliance with the initially approved CUP resolution. Therefore, staff recommends council overturn the resolution number PC twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five, which revoked the CUP resolution for PC twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three for vehicle service and repair at seventy-three hundred County Road one oh one. Staff again will continue to monitor this site and work with the property owner to ensure compliance with the initially initially approved CUP resolution. And again, if there are problems and the property owner is not in compliance, we will either ask them to get in compliance or again, they'll be back for revocation.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff?
Mayor, I have one question.
Yeah, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, my one question is reflective of the paper on the table when we got here that I did read through. By taking this action, are we restoring the original conditional use permit and conditions on the property?
Sorry.
By taking this action, are we restoring the original conditional use permit in its?
Entirety.
In its entirety? Okay.
My comment on this site? So the CUP goes with the land, but the landowner, property owner is responsible for compliance of the CUP, correct?
Mayor and council, that's correct. And so the property owner was notified and in the interim, the property was transferred to another owner. So ultimately whoever owns the property is responsible for all the conditions that are in that CUP. It's not up to the tenant, it's up to the landowner to make sure they're in compliance.
Right. Counselor Lehman?
If I could make one comment on that comment, it could be up to the tenant if the lease was written in a manner saying that the lease lease or must comply with the conditional use permit requirements.
Mayor and council, that's true, but ultimately the CUP is not with the tenant. If you're in violation of the CUP, it goes back to the landlord.
I understand that, but if you write that into your lease, it's a it's much easier to enforce it with your lease or to evict if they're not complying with that provision of the lease.
My comments on this, I I drive by this site all the time. And last year, over the winter, early this spring, that site was a mess. Since then, the summer with the fencing, the landscaping, the view, and I'm just driving by on one oh one. Much vastly improved since the, I think, the, I don't know when they started on the trying to get it back in order, but vast improvements have been made to that site.
And Mayor and council, I will say their attorney, we've worked with extensively to to get this back in order. And then with the city attorney to make sure we're all on the same page.
Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? Counselor Whiting?
No, it looks like the tenant, and I appreciate the staff's work on this as well, took care of the problem and are moving forward with a new eye on what's going to happen if it doesn't doesn't move forward properly. So I think with that, I would make a motion to overturn resolution number PC twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five, which revoked the CUP resolution number PC twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three for vehicle services and repair at seventy-three hundred County Road one oh one.
Motion on the table, Counselor Lehman?
Second, and I'd like to speak to it, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there any comments that the conditional use permit holder has at this time? Yes, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Welcome. Are you the landowner?
Yes.
Please come forward, Mr. Hanson, and state your name and address for the record.
Eugene Eugene Hanson. I am the landlord. And I have in the lease that they have to comply with the conditional uses that are specified to the property and they will be enforced. This got way out of hand last winter. They were asked to clean it up, but they did not respond, so now they're not there anymore.
Right. To follow up on Counselor Lehman's question, are you the new owner as staff?
I would be the new owner he referred to. It was originally John Mensen, Essenberg, the general contractor. He built it and he sold it to me.
Right, okay. Well, then you got a hold of it and then straightened it out. Mr. Hanson, thank you for that.
Thank you, by the way.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that this had was such a mess.
I'm glad we're here today to get it resolved.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
Any other questions of the landowner in regard to the CUP that goes with the land? Otherwise I have a motion in a second on the table. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion passes. Thank you all very much for all your hard work by the landowner and everybody involved and staff. Much appreciated.
Thank you, city hall.
All right. Let's move ahead then to item eleven A, the city bill list that's in front of us. Any comment, questions? City bill list. Seeing none? We would move ahead then to eleven B, liaison administration report. And we will start with Counselor Brennan.
Before tonight's meeting, I had a Shakopee Public Utilities meeting. We had a discussion on solar, on solar projects. Currently, there's two hundred and two homes in Shakopee that have solar panels. So we had a discussion on that and the impact on SPU. And the SPU is working with the school district on a solar project. And that will be brought back to the school district, the school board on, I believe, the next meeting for their approval. There's no meeting next, next meeting of September nineteenth. And I think that's all I have tonight.
Counselor Brennan, or, thank you, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I wanted to ask a question, maybe you can look into this with the utility for us. But there's some stuff that I'm reading about, I think it was Amazon, one of the bigger ones that has a lot of solar usage. And it might be in different parts of the country where it's hot or something, but they're having fire issues on the roofs, so they're going to stop in some places. If you could check into that for us and give us a report back, that'd be great. I'd hate to see a fire hazard created.
You you want me to see if there's solar on our Amazon?
No, no. In general, Amazon is pulling back on using solar on some of its facilities because they're starting on fire.
Okay.
So is that like exclusive to really hot climates down south? Is it something else happening? Is it's, if it doesn't concern our region, then it's a non-issue. But if it's something other than location, it would be nice to know what's the cause in the fires with solar.
Okay.
Not trying to scare anybody, just trying to get information.
All right, thank you. Is that the, that's the end of your report?
Yep.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Scale exec met on September second. Chair Bob Coughlin is stepping down. Second chair Lisa Quinn is stepping into the chair role. We did an overview of the school superintendent meeting, kind of a debriefing. They talked about school resource officers, mental health issues, teacher shortages, affordable households. And it's pretty much an adjust to the executive meeting.
Well, do you have any follow-up on the THC gummy things that scale initiative was working on as a as an ordinance or?
No. I know there's a working group that started on it. They mentioned two names. I didn't recognize our staff in that name, but I know that our staff is on it.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to meet with the Chamber Board and Visitors Bureau for their report. The rhythm on the rails did real well. I can get you a copy of some of that information. They also did a report on some of their demographics of visitors that come to town. And we have a lot of people from the metro, of course, but Fargo is is a big draw.
Wow.
Which surprised me, which is one of the big draws is from Sioux Falls, South Dakota area. Generates a lot of people, then of course.
They're coming here.
They're coming here. Shakopee.
That's a long drive.
Well, hey, it's a it's a it's a spot you go, it's it's the place to be.
Some of us go down and look at their cool water feature in the city square.
I've been down there.
It's been read on, it's pretty cool.
It is.
It's been a while since we've met, but we believe we had the appreciation for our volunteers. And then also our employee picnic, I attended that, that was well-attended. And you had some awards that I hope you'll get to get to remind us about. Other than that, that's all I have.
Counselor Whiting, thank you very much. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor, for the school as well. Today was our first day of school. Welcome back, kiddos. Hope you guys had a great, you know, day. And some sad news on SDA. So the president, again, we hear this a lot, but we know how hard the this work is. I can't express it. It's hard work. It's very, it just takes a lot, you know? So the president, Gina Mitchell, resigned effective, I think it was Thursday, eight twenty-five, August twenty-fifth. And SDA again is just trying to take time to regroup. So I wish them luck, seriously, to find another president who will guide them through these times. And hopefully they can regroup and, you know, get get back to working and doing the great work that they do. And that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Contreras, thank you very much. For my mayor report, I attended the volunteer thank you, thank you event, well-attended, great. Bunch of this stuff that we just couldn't do without the volunteers, thousands of hours and effort of in all different types, whether you're picking up stuff for garbage in a park or you're facilitating an event. Great people, nice event to thank them. So that was great. Also attended the candidate workshop that was put on by city staff led by Bill Reynolds. Just a compliment, I thought the workshop was chock-full of great information for candidates, all of us. And I thought, Mr. Reynolds, you and your staff did a great job presenting. Thank you very much for that. Just a couple of things coming up. Mick Sterling is going to be in concert at the VFW this Friday. And also our big event on Saturday, TAP twenty twenty-two at noon. Get your tickets online. And that'll be a pretty cool event. Weather looks perfect. Mr. Reynolds, the administration report?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to number twelve, other business. Is there any other business before this council? Other business? Seeing none, I would move on to item number thirteen. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M.
A second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned at eight forty-five.